A small agenda with a 166-page packet. We have one ordinance on second and final reading. We have six ordinances, brand-new ones on first reading to be considered tonight, and six resolutions to get through tonight. So 13 items on the agenda. We'll go as quickly as possible, but at the same time, we will try to work out the details on these as we go. If you're tuning in tonight, I believe we have TDS up and working. I'm looking, I got a thumbs up. We were having a little question about whether we would be in coverage. I was like, if it was down, there'll be cries of conspiracy theories going all throughout the town, but glad to see it's up. You're tuning in for an exciting meeting. I believe Monday Night Football is on tonight, too, so you might want to check out football if you're looking for excitement, because we have none planned here tonight after our last few meetings, and we will go quickly here to Robert's Rules of Order. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is setting the agenda. I'll set the agenda as published. If there's no objections, got an ejection? Commissioner Malley?
I would like to move 11.1, 11.5, and 11.6 from the consent agenda to be heard separately.
11?
11.1, 11.5, and 11.6.
They're not on consent, Commissioner.
They're not?
They're under new business.
Yeah, under new business.
Yeah, nine, the items labeled under nine would, are falling under consent. Well, sorry, eight is consent agenda, nine is second reading, and the items labeled 11 are first reading.
Right, but 10 says consent, huh? They're individually? Okay, well, I was reading it as consent. Okay, that's good.
Well, welcome to run-of-malls consent. No takers on that, I take it. If there's no other objections, we'll, we'll set the agenda as published. All right, next item of, on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have a special guest here for the, to do our invocation, and it's actually his first day with our city. And so I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Mr. Justin Beasley with you, to you. A little bit about Justin, he spent seven years working in TV as a sports reporter, an anchor. He started out in Paducah, Kentucky, and he's recently moved to Mount, excuse me, most recently in Nashville where he's worked. He's originally from West Tennessee, spending time in Covington and Jackson. He's a graduate of Middle Tennessee State University, worked inside the Athletics Communication Office during his undergrad. During his time at Nashville, Justin was, has reported on the Titans, the Preds, the Vols, and Vandy as well. He eventually made the transition to the newsroom, covering specifically Wilson and Sumter County, I believe, and which he has now led him to join the City of Mount Juliet. And I want to introduce Justin. He is going to be, Mr. Justin Beasley is going to be our first Public Information Officer here for a city. And I would, sir, ask you if you would, if you wouldn't mind to lead us in the invocation first, and when we complete that invocation, we'll go into the pledge, and then after that, I want you to take just a minute and tell us about yourself.
Okay, sounds good. Let us bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything. We thank you for the City of Mount Juliet. We thank you for people in this room that care so deeply, and make it what it is today, Lord. We are grateful for that. We're also thankful for the resiliency and the spirit of perseverance that this place has showed the last year and a half that has gotten so many people to this point out of a tough spot 18 months ago, Lord. We thank you for that. We also ask you to be with us in this meeting, Lord, that your will be done with all the issues that come up and ways that we can improve this city, Lord. We ask that you look over that and for your will to be done. We also ask you to be with Trooper Aaron Rumford's family. We're so saddened to hear about the news this past weekend and of his involvement in Wilson County, Lord. We just lift his family up. We know you're close to the brokenhearted, and that family needs your healing, and we're thankful for Officer Trooper Rumford's work in this community as well. We ask all these things in your holy and precious name. Amen. All right, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, yeah, just a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, Mayor Manis covered a lot of it. I spent a lot of time in local news, specifically in sports. I've transitioned the last year and a half to telling news stories, but I'm thankful that this job has opened up, one that I believe was open up for me to take, and it's going to be mainly positive storytelling, showcasing all the great avenues that this city has with Mount Juliet. Really looking forward to getting to know a lot, fly just flew in my face, really looking forward to getting to know a lot of you all, and just know that my door is always open. I will need that relationship with you guys to be able to showcase all the great things here in the City of Mount Juliet. I'm certainly excited to get started. Today is my first day, and I'm already at a board, Board of Commissioners meeting, and no other way than to start it off like this. So thank you, guys, for having me, and please reach out and communicate in any other way you can, so we can get the good message out about the City of Mount Juliet. It's not going to be a tough job, because there's so many things to brag about, but I'll definitely need your help, so I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is approval of a minutes. We have two sets, one from a regular meeting on August 23rd, and then the second one on the workshop from August 30th. If there's no objection, we'll approve the minutes as published. Hearing no objections, the minutes will be approved as published. Next item is citizen comments. I'll ask if you come up for citizen comments, that you address the board as a whole. There will be no personal attacks tolerated. State your name and address for the record, yield when requested, and you'll be recognized for three minutes. Name and address for the record, sir.
Jim Legan, 14001 Lebanon Road. I'm here tonight to ask you again, I know we've talked for four months on this, to turn down the proposal to change the McCuskey pile property from RS40, which is what the property was when it was purchased by the new owners, and for it to stay RS40 and turn down the commercial and RS15 request. I own the farm next door to it. I'm concerned about the future of my living. I'm a full-time farmer, just like my dad was, like my grandfather was. We've been there since 1787. In fact, all of those, including my brother across the road, and, or his wife and son are buried there on the place. My grandfather, grandmother, mother and dad are all buried there. So we're, we're going to stay there. Ray knew my dad, and he was a pretty stubborn guy, and I'm kind of just like him. So we're not going anywhere, but we want to stay in business, and I'm concerned about the water source, the underground spring that feeds the both farms that I own. It's 30 feet from this property line, so, and obviously, it's an underground spring that comes out right there, so the source of water is coming from all in the area. There are other springs there. It's why my family settled there in the 1700s. So, you know, you get in there and start bulldozing, yes, they could build eight to 10 houses on it as an RS40, but it's better than 20 houses and a septic, or I mean, a sewer pumping station, and then commercial on the front end, and obviously, the house, my house sitting right there, 50 feet or 30 feet from the property line. I'm concerned about the commercial aspect. I'm concerned about trash, dogs, kids, all that don't mingle with livestock, and that close together and that concentrated, obviously, kids are going to want, there's a green field, there's a creek, let's go play in it. Cow and baby cave are not going to want to play with them, so that concerns me, and I just think it's not a bad plan, it's just in the wrong place. And my opinion, we can't solve our environmental and water issues by pouring concrete down a sinkhole and pouring asphalt and building more strip malls that is like we don't have many, I mean, we've got strip malls all up and down Highway 70. We don't need more traffic, so I appreciate you take that into consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Nick Polk, 414 Silver Springs Lane, Mount Juliet.
You're recognized for three minutes, sir.
Thanks for your time. I want to thank Commissioner Hefner and Trevitt for their efforts to bring term limits back to the board for consideration. I just wanted to urge the board to vote in favor of a referendum when it's proposed to allow the people of Mount Juliet to decide on the issue of term limits. A referendum would tip the scales of power to the people of Mount Juliet, and I think it would be inappropriate to leave this decision regarding term limits of elected officials solely in the hands of the elected officials here. If the people of Mount Juliet want term limits, great. If the people of Mount Juliet don't want term limits, great. Let the people of Mount Juliet decide. With that, I would like to again express why termless would be favorable to Mount Juliet and our community. Term limits help shrink the margins of power between the general public of Mount Juliet and its elected officials. Not only will it make political action more efficient, I believe, it will, I believe also it will enliven the people of Mount Juliet to the understanding that the management of our city is not left to a few, but to all of us, it really does take a village. Term limits will bring the responsibility of our community back on the people's shoulders and awaken us to the reality that we cannot afford to be wallflowers at the party of city management, and in the words of the Beastie Boys, you got to fight for your right to party. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record.
My name's Thomas Birdwell. My wife and I have lived and owned at the property located at 204 Northwest Rutland Road. We are adjacent to the property at 100 Northwest Rutland Road. The property where Velocity Motors is possibly to be built. We have lived here for 39 years. My wife's family has lived and owned all that property at the corner for over 60 years. We do not want to live next to a dealership, as I don't think any of you would either. We think you should take a good, hard look at this area. We feel it's not a good area for this. Traffic is bad on Mount Juliet Road and times at Northwest Rutland Road. We have trouble already at times getting to our driveway. There is two banks, Mount Juliet Baptist Church, Friendship Christian Church, school, traffic, right there on Northwest Rutland Road. There's a playground also right there where that is supposed to be coming out. I think it'd be pretty dangerous for a tractor-trailer or car hauler coming in and out of there. It's pretty tight, it's just a two-lane little road. We've already stated our request at the Planning Commission and would like to add our privacy and security concerns. I would like to add to our request that our existing fence is, was put there by my wife's father, her brother, her father's brother, and myself. We stepped in from the corner post, we stepped in a foot like you're supposed to, so that tree line that they spoke of actually is on our property, but we would like to keep it too, as well as they do too, which is a good thing. We would like to use it as a blind. We still have concerns about water runoff. You know, me and him had a discussion a while ago.
Sorry to wrap it up.
We have a problem with a lot of water, excess water running over on us. We think progress is good for Mount Juliet, but we also think to take into consideration this is going to affect a quiet residential school-church area for progress. There has been a, there has been a balance, there's a thin balance when you develop a city. You also can overdevelop an area. We wish that you would please take, I'm wrapping up.
You're almost a minute over.
We would like to recommend for all of you to drive down through there when it's in the afternoons, when it's real busy, to see the impact that the traffic's going to have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. These, I'll remind everybody, these, these items are here on first reading, so there's, there's two more opportunities to address the board on any of these items. No, sir. Anyone else wish to address the commission? I'd like the Planning Commission, this is probably your one and only opportunity to address the board, so if you have any comments that you'd like, now's the time. I got one more taker, all right. Name and address for the record.
Christopher Montini, 2993 Curd Road. Thank you for your time. Wanted to talk about the Curd Road subdivision that's being brought before you folks tonight. I'm opposed to it. I believe it doesn't fit the zoning for the area, and I've got a couple of questions. Can I ask questions?
It's not, not the time for questions, just comments.
When can I ask questions?
Ask questions outside the meeting.
Okay.
Reach out to staff or reach out to any of us, and we'll be happy to.
All right, well, then, in that case, I'm just going to say that I'd finally got the plans. Thank you, the Planning Commission, for sending those over, and what they're proposing in an RS15 and RS10 zoning area are lot sizes that are well below those minimum requirements, well below. And I want to, I don't, that's what I want to ask the question, how could you do that? There's reasons that we have zoning requirements, zones, how can you make these lot sizes so much smaller? And there's 155 lots that are way undersized for the zone. There's a whole bunch of other variances that they're going to talk about tonight, I guess, and I just think it's a bad plan. It doesn't fit the area, it's going to cause all kinds of traffic and safety issues, and I don't want it.
Well, I believe we're going to ask to remove the R10 anyway, so I think that's coming, so stay tuned.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else to address the Board of Commissioners? All right, seeing none, we'll close citizen comments with this up, we'll take this moment to move on to Commissioner, Commissioner Reports and Comments. I'd like to recognize Commissioner District Four, Jennifer Malley.
All right, August Newsletter went out, and of course, it's the middle of September, but I didn't get to announce that at the last meeting. JenniferMalley.com, you can subscribe by email. This coming Sunday, September 19th, we are having the B-PAC, which is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We're having the eighth annual walk, run, and roll. So whether you like to walk, run, or ride a bicycle, you are welcome to come. It's from 2:00 to 4:00 at Monday Park, Soft Belinda. It's free. The, there's a route, which basically is a loop around Providence and Belinda, starting at Monday, and it will end at Monday, and it's about the, to walk and run, it's a 5K for a bicycle, it's about five and a half miles, and it doesn't matter your skill level, all, the, the, the community is invited. There also will be a special kids event for a book called The Big Dance, and it's to participate in the story walk, and there will be 17 reading stations with a little short walk in between each one. So that'll, that'll be real exciting, so bring the family. Also, if you're 12 and under, you can register to win a free bicycle, and you do have to be present to win. That's sponsored by the Velitiers Bicycle Club. And just prior to the event, we are having at 1:30, we're having a ribbon cutting for the Belinda City, well, Belinda Park Parkway sidewalks that were just completed earlier last year, and this was the reason that we're having it on Sunday just prior to the B-PAC event, is because the B-PAC is the one that, are the ones who applied for the grant several years ago that made this possible. So we decided to tie the two together. So if you would like to be a part of the ribbon cutting, be at Monday Park at about 1:20, and at 1:30, we're going to walk up to where the crosswalk crosses Belinda Parkway, where the sidewalk ends and cuts, crosses and cuts into the trailhead at Monday Park, and we're going to have a ribbon cutting there. So if you'd like to participate in that, that is at 1:30. And currently, the B-PAC also is looking for continued grants for the Phase Two section that would finish out the sidewalks. So that was all I had.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Next, I'd like to recognize our Vice Mayor and District One Commissioner, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mayor. Was not able to attend, but I did want to thank everybody that participated and made the 9/11 ceremony successful. It was a very sad day, and over the last 20 years, we've had a lot of time that we tried to bring back the sense of unity that we had that day, since we take sometimes two steps forward and then maybe three or four steps back. We get into that, and it's kind of sad where we are today. So we're hoping that, you know, the memories of that, the memories of where we were then will bring us back to where we need to be. So for those that participated and those that made it possible, City Manager Kenny Martin, thank you for, for doing that and getting that taken care of. It was an honor. I had a lot of questions, and it falls right in line with what this gentleman was asking when it comes to the zoning, and this is not necessarily about the Curd Road project itself, but it's the overall density that we've been seeing as developers come to our city. For many, many years since we approved Providence, the density was approved at a higher rate because it was where the roads were. The higher the density, more people could, you know, move around freely. It wasn't necessarily as bad. Somewhere along the way, the people overran the roads, and of course, we know what we've got now, we've got a Mongolian mess up here in the, at the interstate. Hopefully, that's going to start getting better as we get the, the overpass fixed. For many years, I stood in the middle of Mount Juliet Road with my hands up, trying to stop people from coming here, and I was pretty successful at it. My district, which is the far north end of town, farthest away from the interstate, was the district that I could, you know, I would stand up here and say, guys, no, you know, we don't need that kind of density here, which meant that development did not necessarily want to be here. They wanted the density, the density, the numbers created the wealth for them. Now there's a lot of traffic on Mount Juliet Road, and if I stand in the middle of the road and scream, now they just run over me. I still have to work and make a living, so my children need me, I'm not going to stand in the middle of Mount Juliet Road. I have been talking to Ms. Hamblin, who's sitting up here gracing us with her presence tonight, about what we could do as the growth moves our direction, and I think anybody that knows is the growth, as our city does grow, it's going to grow north. We've got more and more development that is coming our direction, and so I'm not in the business anymore of stopping development. We're going to have to be in the business now of managing development and managing density and managing growth as it moves. We don't have the infrastructure available to us in the north end of town to allow for large or high densities. So we've taken all that into consideration. What I have asked Ms. Hamblin to work on, and she's perfect, she's been here so long she knows all this stuff by heart, she doesn't have to go to the ordinances anymore, she just recites them verbatim from memory. We are looking at the minimum lot size that we have approved in the past has been 7,500, as in the average being 10,000. What I have asked her to look at the possibility of is the average lot size, the minimum average lot size being 10,000. Right now, we have an RS15 zoning that is still considered medium density, and I've asked her also to look at, so we can take it to the Planning Commission and get this board's approval on it, is to moving the RS15 out of the medium-density land use plan and move that into the high-density land use plan, because in the north end of town, we don't have any more high-density left. So that would mean that anything that came in would be RS20 or RS30, if I'm mistaken, is that correct? Or RS40 being low-density, actually, which is one-acre lots, RS30 being one-third acre, and then RS20 being a half-acre. So that's what we're looking at to start managing the growth here. I will tell you, we've got a project coming in here tonight that started out, had an RS10 and RS15 being this project, and the developers looked at, and we've gone over this, and we have worked and worked and worked, and I will tell you what they've come up with, with a planned unit development, is that we're going to be allowed to actually get in RS15, no RS10, the villas are taken out, they've lowered the lots, or the lot count down by 20, and the infrastructure that they are providing being sidewalks and things of that nature, and including, including off-site road improvements. I think what you're going to see is a whole lot better project than what they originally came in with. So take that into consideration as you're looking at it. This is going to be the first reading as we go through it, so we'll be able to tweak this, but I will tell you, this particular developer has been a blessing to work with over many years that we've, we've been here in the City of Mount Juliet, so I think it's going to help us, and it'll help the city overall. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next, I recognize District Two, Commissioner Bill Trevitt.
Well, good afternoon, evening, I guess we're in evening now. Just well, just welcome Mr. Beasley to the city. Thank you, sir, looking forward to getting the message out. That's one thing that I was really excited about, knowing that we have someone that specializes in communication for us to get the good message out, so thank you, looking forward to working with you. Also, I'd like to mirror what the Vice Mayor had stated about this weekend, I was able to, you know, to be there and celebrate the, the 9/11 memorial that we were all able to, to see down at the clock towers this weekend. I'll tell you, 20 years ago, I think all of us that, you know, you know, that were at a certain age knows exactly where we were, you know, during that time, and I'll tell you, it's just, you know, to see where we are today, I think the mayor, or the Vice Mayor, excuse me, hit the nail around the head, you know, we take two steps forward and sometimes five steps backwards, you know, and in this city here, I'll, I'll tell you, folks, I've brought this up many times about how patriotic this city is, and, and there was a family here tonight that actually was, that was honored, Mr. Mike Bean and his family for kind of stepping up outside of the 9/11, but for the 13 soldiers that, you know, that our country had lost over there in Afghanistan. And this man took the opportunity to build multiple sets of crosses, and then also step out of the comfort zone of putting some flags up in front of Hickory Hills. I'll tell you, man, that was amazing to see somebody just step out of the, you know, just the norm, and to, you know, to grab that attention to all of us, and, and then to be able to see Friday Night Football with our city getting back to normal, you know, what we see at the last 16, 18 months of this COVID situation that we're all dealing with, and then to see our football team, you know, be able to celebrate something, you know, the kids to be able to get back to normal, of whatever normal is. So, you know, to be able to, you know, to be able to see that patriotism from our city, we're just blessed, folks. That's one, that's one big reason why I threw my name in the hat, to sit up here, to help make some of these hard decisions for the growth of our city, and to listen to every single one of you. I stated this in the Board of Education meeting last week, you know, we've got 19,200 kids in our school district, and, and on average, before COVID, we had about six to seven family members that would show up, six to seven out of 19,200 kids. Think about that for a second. And then here it is, we got a city of 40,000-plus residents, and on average, we have less than probably 35 people here tonight. You know, that's not including the folks that are on, you know, online watching this. I just recommend anybody just to get involved, at least listen, to know what your city's doing, to know what your county's doing, to know what your school district's doing, you know, be a voice, you know. I'm always asked to, you know, kind of not talk so much. I think my son always tells me, Dad, let's go, quit talking. He's six years old, by the way, and, but I'll tell you what, man, that's one thing I love to do, is get to know my neighbors, get to know, you know, who's around me, and that's what I think we all should be doing, get to know your neighbors, you know, get to know what's going on in your community, get involved. So with that, I'm going to roll into one other thing, which is, thank you, Mount Juliet PD, for everything you guys are doing out there, keeping our streets safe, our churches safe on Sundays. And, uh, just want to just reiterate coffee with a police officer at Starbucks North, uh, Thursday, September 16th at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And, uh, I don't know if you're a coffee drinker, but you know, if not, it's okay. You know, Starbucks has everything for you. So even a glass of water. So, I'd recommend folks, take the opportunity to meet an officer. They're out there protecting our streets. It's very important. You know, anytime I see them, I always stop, say hi, you know, show them, you know, the support that they need, you know? We've got a strong force in this city. I think the mayor had stated earlier, we're ranked number five in the state. How cool is that? You know, uh, earlier today we had some, uh, Boy Scouts that came in just to sit down with the mayor and ask some hard questions. I seen the man over here sweat. It was pretty impressive by some seven, eight year olds. Aren't they about seven and eight, maybe 10? So, okay.
You were freshmen.
Okay, okay, okay. Someone a little bit older. But either way, folks, uh, I, I, I just figure with my platform tonight, um, I really didn't have a whole lot because I hadn't met up with a whole lot of communities, uh, this past week, but, uh, I just want to put that, you know, on your heart, your mind, and think about what we can do to participate. So Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker will be District Three Commissioner Scott Hefner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I've just got a few things I want to cover. First of all, welcome, Jason. Um, appreciate you, I'm sorry, Justin, sorry, Justin. Appreciate you stepping up, um, and filling the role, um, much needed by the way. So appreciate it and welcome. Welcome to Mount Juliet family. Also want to thank everybody for coming out, participating in the nine 11 ceremony, uh, over the past weekend. It was, um, sobering, um, but to that extent, uh, and, and I hope they never get tired of hearing me say this, but I really do appreciate all that the fire department, police, EMS services does for this community. Every single day they put their lives on the line, not knowing if they're going to make it back home. So I appreciate you very much. Just know that. Thoughts and prayers go out to Trooper, uh, Rumford, Rumsford, um, his family. Uh, the ones that he's, if he had kids, I'm not sure if he had kids, but wife, friends, family that he left behind. Thoughts and prayers go out to them. Over the past weekend, had opportunity to talk to State Senator John Pody. Uh, he's very much interested in me joining his committee, um, to rewrite blasting regulations in the state of Tennessee. So absolutely have accepted that invitation and look forward to, uh, tightening up some of the blasting, um, laws that are in the state. So, um, that's something I'm actually very much looking forward to. Couple other things, um, if you've waved, waved to me in the past and I've looked at you and I didn't acknowledge you back, it's because I've got poor eyesight. And today I've actually, for the first time in my life, have contact lenses. So I can actually see your faces. So, um, so bear with me, but now I can recognize you and I promise I will wave back because I can actually see you. So, couple other things, uh, I, I normally don't drive. So is that what the comment was? Not at night anyways. Just a reminder, Mount Juliet Police Department, uh, their explorers are having a golf, uh, tournament this Friday. If you haven't signed up, I'm sure there's still some openings. So, uh, I'll be out there playing. So look forward to, uh, uh, swinging the golf club around, uh, this weekend, hopefully not losing too many golf balls. But, uh, anyways, if you haven't signed up, there's still spots available for sponsorships and, and to actually play. Uh, and then last but not least, um, I'm getting some, uh, I'm hearing some from some of my constituents about, uh, home builders. These are smaller home builders. Um, they're taking advantage of them. I won't mention names. But I want to put this out to anybody that's watching, that will be watching. If you have a home builder that's harassing you, that's belittling you, that's being verbally, um, abusive to you, that's charging you for city building, uh, city permitting fees for tornado victims, please contact me, please. And I will address it with them directly. So with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. For my report, I just want to say I hope everybody had a wonderful and restful, restful Labor Day. They got to spend some time with friends and family. I wanted to thank, uh, Boy Scout troop 438 for coming in here. I know they were working on their, uh, citizenship badge. I invited them to stay, but you know, the commission meeting lost out. So they did say they would be watching the meeting online. Wow, Sonic, I believe. I don't know how they're pulling that off, but you know, hey. So thank them for stopping by, working on their citizenship badge. As Commissioner Trevett pointed out, they asked some good questions. So a fun experience anytime we get to sit down with those. Got to go to the Green Hill High School football game Friday. They got the win, but you know, more importantly, they took the opportunity to honor our military, our first responders, recognize the 13 Americans that were lost in Afghanistan back in August. And they also recognized the 20th anniversary of nine 11. And it was a really special moment. They really went out of their way to, to do it right, uh, to memorize the day for what it was. And, you know, it, they did a wonderful job and I, I really appreciate them stepping up and doing that. The, the football coach, the football team, the school, everyone involved. Also there's one other person I, I've got to recognize in this. Um, and I know you, Commissioner Trevett, you just, you mentioned him a little bit earlier, but I got to mention it again, Mr. Michael Bean. He stepped, he stepped up. First he created the crosses that you see in front of, um, Wes Wilson Middle School down there. You see those crosses and, and you know, I, I reached out to him and I said, you know, what if we, what if we, uh, maybe reach out to the school and see if we can set those up for the game because they're, they got a lot of stuff planned and he's, and you know, he could have just said, well, sure. But he said, um, you know, a lot of people are, are dropping off flowers there. It's really be, it's really started to mean a lot to a lot of people. Um, you know, the feedback on social media has been really, he says, how about I just create, create another set of them. So not only did he recreate the 13 crosses that he created initially, he went and created two more, two for the, the officers that we lost during the city, uh, several years back. Uh, Officer Monday and Deputy Music, he created two more for them. So in total, he created 15 additional crosses there. And that was, as you pointed out, really stepped up. Um, he, he told me he was going to recruit some members of the football team to help him with that. So to recognize him and for his efforts that we did, uh, presented him just a, just a few minutes before the meeting started with a proclamation. Uh, September 13th is going to be known as Michael Bean Day here in Mount Juliet, to recognize him for his efforts. Uh, I think he had to leave a little early, but, uh, I wish he was here because I'd have him stand up and be recognized. But, you know, he really went above and beyond. And it's like you said, just another one of those examples of what makes this city special. Had a lot of people come up to me in the ceremony, the nine, nine 11 ceremony that we had Saturday morning and, and thanked me for all my efforts in that. As, as much as a politician that I am, I'd like to take credit for that. I, I can't. Uh, that was all the efforts of the, I think the police department really led the charge on that. And there were a lot of other city departments that, that worked on it. Uh, the extent of my contributions was, was, uh, stepping in and saying, I don't think anybody needs to hear from politicians on that day. So with that, they did a wonderful job. It was a wonderful ceremony. It was, was everything it should have been for remembering the day and for what it was. And I thank them and, sir, I, I know I told you no questions. I have to do that. I know it sounds mean. I feel like a bad guy when I do it. But, uh, if you stick around at the meeting, we, we can sit down and go over anything you, you want to. And I'll, I'll be happy to do it, be happy to meet with anybody anytime. But we just, we have, we have an order to the meeting and a lot of that's prescribed by city code that we have to follow and go in that. And I hate to tell somebody no because I know a lot of times it's just simple things. And sometimes we can tell you to get with staff and work it out. But if you stick around, we'll give you all the time you need for any questions you want. And we can, we can go through PUDs and RS 10s and 20s and 40s and 30s and R 10s and CRCs and anything else you want to go through. We got a, we got a whole, uh, our, our M eights, our M 16s. Yeah, we got a whole variety of them. There's more, more to go through. So anyway, that's going to conclude my comments. Uh, thank everybody for, for what you do, making this city what it is. Um, it's, it's one of a kind in here and we got something special here in Mount Juliet and we strive to keep it that way. With that, I'll recognize our city manager for his report. You recognized for 10 minutes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thanks, everybody for coming out and participating, those that are here tonight and also those watching from home. I think what you see tonight, which is what you see every day in this wonderful community is the people that make it so special. Justin, I want to thank you, uh, because I know it's a sacrifice for you and your family to change from a job that you loved to come somewhere else. But as I was talking to Justin, uh, when, once he applied for the job, we were doing the interview process. He said, there's just something special about Mount Juliet. I feel called to come to serve Mount Juliet. And I think the people that are here, you wouldn't be here if you didn't care about your community. And it's what it makes it so special. And I'd like to thank the commission, the police, the fire, Representative Susan Lynn, and also Miss Nancy Britt with the Tyler Cates, uh, organization here in town for letting us borrow a lot of the extra flags. She'll show a lot of pride in our community beyond what we normally do, uh, for what's happened. That's what they think it speaks volumes. And I also want to thank, uh, our military, uh, veterans, our current military, uh, uh, and also those that are going to serve in the future. And also our Blue Star families and our Gold Star families for all that they do. A lot of times there's people out here, there's people in this room that are veterans. So we have this room that are family members of veterans, our service members, and thank them because we wouldn't have the freedoms that we have without them. So thank them for their sacrifices. And, um, I'd also like to, uh, thank the police and the fire department and also, uh, the military for their efforts with this event that we had, the nine 11 event on Saturday morning and everybody that showed up and participated. I was absolutely blown away with, by that. I think it was a very, um, moving, uh, ceremony. And, um, I'd like to switch now to give some recognition to a local Wilson County resident mayor, to, to speak volumes. We got lots of people we can brag about. It's like the mayor had said about Mr. Bean, the scouts that were here earlier, they're going to be the future leaders. You know, uh, one of the, uh, the dad here in the back talked about his three kids going to the Mount Juliet Christian Academy. And the reason he said he'd enrolled them in the Christian school is he wanted to be good men and good future leaders. You know, it speaks volumes to see a father that's making a sacrifice and a mother to, uh, to pay extra tuition to send their kids to a private school because they want to be good future leaders. And then you see all the young men here from the scouts and the parents that are involved in the scouts that want them to be good leaders. And they're asking their elected body and leaders about leadership. And then we get to bring up a young lady here that I can talk about that you've probably seen. She works in a local restaurant here in town. Uh, probably one of the sweetest people that you've ever met. Uh, she spent 25 years in the medical field. I believe it was at ACA Tri-Star Summit. And, uh, she just refuses to quit working and she's been at it for a long, long time. So and amongst her duties from working every day and being just a absolutely wonderful human being, she also participates in beauty pageants. And, um, we won't get into her age because when she told me her age, I thought it was actually literally half of that. I thought she was lying to me just to make it up. And her wonderful husband's here with her tonight. But let me tell you just a little bit about it and then Mayor, I'll have her say a little bit. But she's basically resident Wilchin, Wilson County. In 2018, uh, she won Miss Senior Wilson County Tennessee, which is pretty awesome. It's a big competition. A lot of ladies from all over the state participate in that and, and, well, Wilson County, I'm sorry. But, uh, she also participated, uh, and recently, I guess it's August 29th, she won the title of Miss Tennessee Tri-Star Elite. And I hope I said that right, uh, at the Williamson County Performing Arts Center. And, uh, she works at Longhorn, so I'll name the restaurant and give a shout out there. If you ever want to see Mrs. Sandra, just go see her there. And you've probably seen her many, many times. And I think I mentioned too, 25 years retired from Summit. So I'd like to give her an opportunity. And first and foremost, Miss Sandy, thanks for being so sweet and thank you to your husband. I think she said they've been married for 40 years. And I don't know how they did that because she's just 50. I hadn't figured that out, but somehow I know they pulled that off. Unless they just lost track of time and it's really half that number. But I'd like to have her come up and just say a little bit. She's absolutely beautiful lady on the outside and inside. And, uh, she can tell us a little bit about this program that, that she was victorious in.
Oh, we have not been married 40 years. I can tell you that. Oh, no, no, mm-mm. Um, 13. It might seem like 40 to him though. I'm not sure. Anyway, first of all, let me just say thank you to the city manager, Kenny Martin, for this invitation and the opportunity to come and speak at this meeting and represent my new title as your 2021 Mrs. Tennessee Tri-Star Elite. Also thank the city, the, the mayor, the managers and the commissioners for all your support. Uh, always, he's always there for me, um, taking an ad out and, and things like that for me. And that, that means so much to me. So you might ask yourself, why does Mrs. Tennessee Tri-Star Elite mean? It represents, it means this. It's a Mrs. Senior Woman over the age of 55. So it's, you know, a lot of times people, they, uh, they start making a bucket list. But I don't have a bucket list because, you know, age is just a number to me. As he says, I don't really feel my age, but that's okay. I might not look at either, but it's just a number to me. And, um, I'm still feeling, trying to fulfill my childhood dreams. So when I get through with those, then I might do a bucket list. So anyway. And that, one of those was to, to be the queen of the state and represent my state in every way that I can. And the reason I know I can do that is because in Philippians four and 13, I'm reminded that I can do all things through Christ which strengtheneth me. So I get my strength from one above called Jesus Christ. But my journey to my success, set, uh, success, uh, was when I won the title of Mrs., um, Mrs. Tennessee Tri-Star Elector began in 2018 when I was crowned Mrs. Wilson County Tennessee Senior, as, as Kenny said. And that gave me the confidence and the desire to continue on to fulfill my hopes, dreams and vision, to fulfill what I believe my purpose in life is, and that is to help make a difference in any way that I can. And I will say also, I thank all the military, all police officers, all firemen, all, any part of any kind of military, I thank in each, every one of you, and everybody that takes part in, in when there's a disaster. Everybody pitches in and that's what Wilson County does. Tennessee is known as the volunteer state and I look forward to carrying on that tradition and making myself available to anybody in any county and any state. If I can be of service to you and help you in any way, please do not hesitate to call me. It's also important to recognize that there are people, without these people, these opportunities would not be, uh, available to us. And Ms. Julie Perez, the director of the Mrs. Tennessee America and Mrs. Tennessee American Pageant, uh, makes it all possible for, for women like me and young people to be able to get out there and make a difference in the world. One person being your own Mount Juliet resident, Ms. Amber Lynn Carroll, who, um, is involved in, uh, the suicide. Uh, and she has a bench, I think, out here that was dedicated and she's on the, uh, she's co-founder of the, um, of, of that, uh, organization. So I want to recognize her as, as doing that. And then also Mrs. Hubbard, Stephanie Hubbard in Lebanon, who is involved in, in that also, which she is in with, doing special things with autism and things like that. And, and that is what we get involved in. I'm involved in a lot of charities, Cancer Society, the military, veterans, anything that I can be involved in, that is what I want to do. Because how can we change the future if, if we forget the past? We can't. We have to remember where we've come from. So we know where we are going. And I'm also honored to, to say that I'm proud to be a part of, of, of all these organizations and I'm looking forward to working with them and in a new organization, not only in my own communities, but other surrounding communities. And I'm a firm believer that if you want to make a difference, you must first be the difference. And if you want to see a change, then be the change. I may be only one person, but I may be the person, I can be the person that makes a difference. As Mrs. Tennessee Star Lead, I do not take the title lightly and I will do my very best to represent all of Tennessee with pride, honor and dignity in function that I invite and invited to attend to, not only in my home state, but in all states, as I've already said. I want, I'm looking forward to sharing my experience in life with children of all ages, such as your little Boy Scouts and everybody, that to set your goals high and never give up on what they truly believe in. To believe is to achieve and to achieve is to believe. I'm often, often asked to sing the national anthem and I've taken pride in that. And I can say that every night at the Wilson County Tennessee State Fair, I sang the national anthem every, every single night, uh, at the motorsports arena. And I was so honored to do that. I'm honored to do it at any event and venue. I can honestly say as a senior citizen, when I sing the national anthem, I sing and stand with pride. And I believe in what I'm singing for. And that is that I am proud to be an American and I live in the greatest country in the world, the United States of America. And I'll say this in closing, God bless you and God bless the USA.
And Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move into the business portion of our agenda.
First, first item, we have one item on second reading. It's nine A, an ordinance to rezone property known as the Powell McCluskey property, map 53 parcel 130.02 and 130.03, from single family residential RS 40 to commercial retail center CRC and single family residential RS 15. Have a motion and a second. Item is on the floor, any comments? Commissioner Trevette.
Yes, so obviously this, this topic is, I guess, very passionate for a particular family. Lot of history on this land. I just want to let, you know, the record state to know that, you know, this board takes everything in consideration. Obviously, this is just to decide whether or not tonight, if we're going to go ahead and, and rezone it. But if this project does move forward and there is development, there will be a lot of stipulations that will be expected of these developers to make sure that surrounding properties will not be affected. So I just want to make sure that that's noted on, on that, on this, excuse me, on this line item here. So that's all I want to state, mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor, recognized.
Thank you. This particular property, and I had asked for it to be changed from RS 15 and taken to RS 20. And then I had gotten word, and I'm trying to remember actually at this point, who it was that told me that they were, the owners were okay with that. All right. I will tell you, well, actually, at this point, I probably, what I would like to do is amend this then from RS 15 and change it from RS 15 to RS 20. Be the, be the zoning change on that.
So that's to change the portion currently identified as RS 15 to RS 20.
Was currently identified as RS 40. And we'll be changing that to RS 20 as opposed to RS 15, correct?
Yeah. Changing what's before us as RS 15 requested.
For discussion, correct.
And have a second on that. Mister, do you have any more to say about your?
I do. I'm having a hard time supporting this. And I think most of you know, with the time that we have spent up here, most of the projects that come that are in pieces like this one, where you've got one piece of it is commercial, the other piece of it's going to be a residential piece. We have tried and tried and tried to make sure that we've identified the actual project and the way it's laid out, which is one of the reasons that we've always encouraged the planned unit development. You've heard us talk about PUDs from time to time. That's the planned unit development that we try to, try to get. That gives us, matter of fact, that is the only, and Mr. Marketti, you tell me, feel free to disagree with me, but my understanding is that is the only position that the city has to, to legally negotiate with a developer is, is through the, the PUD or the planned unit development relationship.
Making some pretty substantial changes.
Correct.
As opposed to straight zoning, correct?
And so when that doesn't happen, when it comes in and it's not a planned unit development, it comes in as straight zoning, we lose a lot of control over what that actual site looks like. And that makes us really nervous. We have had people come in in the past and they, and I, please understand, I'm not saying this, you would do this, okay? But we've had people come in in the past and they say, oh yeah, we're going to get straight zoning on this. And then they walk in after we've approved it because we took them at their word. And we wind up with a project that looks nothing like they told us it was going to be. And it was actually, would have been unacceptable if they had brought it to us on paper. Makes us a little jaded when we start looking at people who are doing development. We, we don't tend to take them at their word anymore. So again, this is not aimed individually at you guys at all. It's just aimed at the experience that we've had up here. And one of the reasons that you've been through this is that we do question these things because we don't want somebody coming into our development, starting, or into our city and start putting in a development that is just not acceptable. So, but that is my, my motion is to take it to RS 20 at this point.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Move to RS 20. We ready to vote? All in favor of the amendment to amend the RS 15 portion to RS 20? Please signify by saying aye. All right, that's unanimous. Any, I already announced unanimous, but any, any opposed, I have to ask, is unanimous. All right, the ordinance is now amended one time. Is there any other additional discussion on the ordinance as amended? Commissioner Heffter?
Yes, since it's not a PUD ordinance, I have met with the developers, the owners. And so I want to just state for the record what they've agreed to do. If there's, if this were to pass. This is specifically related to blasting. So blasting, they've agreed to send pre notification letters 500 feet from the boundary lines to any residence or commercial within that 500 feet area. Those letters are to be sent certified mail. So there's a record of them being sent out and signed off on. The blasting is going to be reduced from what is now the state regulation of two inches per second. They're going to reduce that in half by one inch per second. Is this what we've agreed to and discussed? Okay. All right. That's all I have.
All right. Any, anyone else wishing to speak? Not among recognized the vice mayor. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate what you're trying to do. Absent a PUD, we can't do it. It's not legal to do that. They can't commit to it here and we have no jurisdiction to hold them to here.
I know. I wanted it read in, I wanted it read in the books.
It's a, it's not a PUD. This is, this is exactly what I was talking about. We don't have that authority and that control to be able to make this a negotiation process without this being a planned unit development. And that's the reason I've got the, the nerves going on about it. It's not a big enough project that it's going to have a huge impact. But this goes along with what I said earlier about the RS 20 north of the railroad tracks, north of Lebanon Road, you know, trying to make it less dense and also give us some of those other controls. But I, I agree with exactly what you're wanting to do. But I just, you're, you're actually, this proves my point, that what makes it me a little, little edgy. Okay. Go ahead.
I'll just say one at a time.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Malley.
Well, I also have met with the developers and I've been following the neighbor, Mr. Ligon, and his comments at every meeting as well. So it's, it's a real hard decision. I feel for Mr. Ligon because if I lived there, I wouldn't want it either, especially because you have a farm. My concern is stormwater runoff. And I know you're going to, the developer's going to start with the commercial part first and the residential will come later. And I know that you're waiting for the sewer letter from Andy. The, also my concern is the natural springs in which, when I met with you, you said the natural spring is in the back of the property and you agreed not to touch it or interfere with it in any way. I wanted to, before I mentioned the rentals, which is a big issue. Can we get Andy to come up and talk about the sewer letter?
Yes. So we have gone through the sewer availability with the development team on this one. We have granted that, at least the ability to connect to our sewer system, subject to, basically there is an existing sewer line a little bit further to the east, about three properties to the east. And as part of that, they would have to have a, at least a small sewer pump station to take, convey the sewage from the, at least from the residential portion of the development and have to take that. And it's going to have to come up to the right of way within Lebanon Road and then follow the right of way down to the property where the existing sewer is, which is, I believe, basically where the antique store is today. And so as part of that, we have also coordinated with West Wilson Utility District on that to see where their water line is. Typically, they're well within their own easement outside the right of way. In this case, it's actually, there's a little bit of a pinch point. We have worked with them. They did get their, their lines actually located, physically located to give us a, a survey. And so there's a little bit of room, there's not a lot of room, but there is room enough to be able to fit and maintain a separation between the sewer line proposed for this project and the existing water line with West Wilson. State law requires this, we've got to be 10 feet off their line. So there's room there, it's not much, but there is room. One pinch point in particular, I'm going to say it's probably about 50 feet long or so. That's, it's a pretty good little pinch point. But other than that, they would be able to convey the sewage within the state right of way. They would be able to, most likely be at Forest Main in there, which is not as deep, not as, not as destructive on a construction. But they would be able to follow that and, and convey that sewage to the east. So that was what our availability is subject to. It would be up to the developers to obtain the easements. What I would ask in that instance, if there's a situation where they're unable to obtain the sewer easements, that we've gone through this process before where if it be the will of the body of the commissioners, that we would, we could acquire that on behalf of the developer for connection to that existing sewer. But that would only be subject to the approval of the commission. With that, basically all costs would be the responsibility of the developer. My, my best take for that would be, that would need to come via the, an escrow account. And basically, we could acquire it, but it would all be subject to them. As far as I know, I think the one easement that they would have to have, I've not been told differently, but I believe everything's gone well from their side of it as far as acquiring that thus far. So from my understanding, I don't think the city has to have any involvement with acquiring that easement.
Okay, and the, the letter, I believe they said that you were going to supply a letter with all that information, but it won't be ready till the end of the month?
We've actually already supplied the sewer availability letter.
Is that the one from last year or?
Hmm.
I have one dated October.
It's probably, that's probably it. There's no change in the availability.
There's no change? Okay.
And with a less dense zoning, that would actually be more beneficial to our sewer system.
All right. And the stormwater runoff from the commercial part, what, what are your, what's your input on that?
From the commercial part, that, that area actually flows toward Lebanon Road. So I have less concerns about that. That's going to convey toward Lebanon Road. So obviously they're going to have to basically, it's the same regulations for anything. Their flow after development has to be less peak flow than what it was before. Additionally, the water quality, they have to address all the water quality requirements that we have and, and TDEC has for us. So they have to address all that. Now, to the flow in the back, obviously we'd want to look at a geotechnical report. We'd want to identify any wet weather conveyances that may be. Looking at the TDEC map, there's not any streams on this property according to what TDEC has. It's very close, it's on, it's on the adjacent property. But they would have to have any wet weather conveyances would have to be protected. So buffers, typical buffers, things like that. So generally that'd be a 30 foot buffer.
All right, and what about elevation back there? Would this have, be required to be built up?
They don't have a whole lot of room in the back or in the northern part of the property. There's some pretty good elevation drop in that area. There's not a whole lot of room to mass grade it and, and make it, make it flat, I would say. And generally, generally speaking, they're going to more or less have to work with the lay of, lay of the land on that section. They might have a little bit more availability to do some more grading within the middle portion of the site and create some more buildable lots out there. I think there may be some difficulty. Obviously, we've got to look at steep slopes. We have our regulation of 20% slopes that are not allowed to be within a, a building envelope. And so those are, those, we maintain those requirements, pretty strict on those. And so that's to, that's to protect the existing steep slopes that may be out there.
Okay, as far as the natural streams, when the back part starts under construction, do you foresee any problem with interference in that, those, the natural stream?
That'd come down to the buffer. The buffer has to be maintained during construction and even after construction. As part of the reason for that is to maintain any quality of the existing waterways. You know, if there's an existing spring there that has to be protected. And so basically, well, at least, you know, sometimes there may be some areas you may not uncover until you're in construction. But I'd say towards the edge of the property, that's going to be pretty easy to identify. If there's water running off there constantly, that's going to be easy to identify from a.
There's a conversation we had with the developer was, there was a natural stream in the very, very, very back. Along the side out, so there's two. Two natural streams.
Right. They're both just off, just off the property according to our GIS map.
Okay.
Off this property.
If this were to get approved, this would not come back to the BOC for, you know, the plan because they would already have the rezone, right? This would not come back to the BOC. This is, and, all right. Well, that's all the questions I had for Andy. Does, did anybody else have any?
I think, Commissioner Trevette, would like to be recognized?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I hate to kind of roll this back out and kind of delay, but there's a lot of questions that we're still finding out. And I would like to ask if we can make a motion to defer this, to be able to go back to the developers and see if they will consider a PUD, especially with the recommendations from our city attorney. Because obviously we want to make sure that we stay consistent with other developers. So that's my motion.
Okay, the motion is second, has a proper motion with a second. I guess your motion is to defer?
For one meeting.
For one meeting.
To allow the developers to consider, not unless they want to come up and discuss this.
Do we, that's probably the quickest way to cut through. Do we have represent, represent, someone to represent the project to come up?
I think that may help.
Can I have your name and address for the record, sir?
I'm Janesh Kudibandi, 827 Ventura Drive.
All right.
Yes, so the, the, thank you, Commissioner Trevette. So we actually did pretty good research on the PUD requirements. Since, you know, this whole parcel is about 12 acres and the front commercial, you know, would be around two and a half, three acres. So the residential portion in the back would be around nine acres. And like, you know, Andy was saying earlier, Andy Barlow, the, the back portion, the extreme back and on the east, we would lose about two acres for the natural spring. So we won't be touching that, whether it's the buffer zone or we won't be developing that, right? So in the remaining seven acres in the back, you know, if you leave about 30% of that for, you know, streets and open areas, you'd be left with about four acres to actually develop the lots. So in the RS 20, that would be eight to 10 lots max. So in terms of the number of homes we're talking about, that's eight to 10 homes, single family homes. So from a PUD requirement standpoint, you know, you know, right? You know, if, if you look at, you know, if you have provide amenities and street walks and play areas, you know, it's just economically not feasible to do all that work for this eight to 10 homes. And that's the major concern.
All right. I think planning director, what's the, I want to ask you, what's the process? They have to start the whole process back over through the planning commission again.
That's exactly why I raised my hand. Yes, sir.
Are you aware of that requirement? Next planning commission's October.
We'll have to go on.
It's going November.
We'll still have to have engineered drawings.
Engineered drawings.
What is this for again? And when do we have to go back from start again?
Commissioner Trevette made a motion to ask that you be deferred for a meeting, which actually it should be several meetings. To allow you to bring your application back with a PUD overlay.
Yeah, like I said, the PUD, again, that's the concern, right? I don't know, for eight to 10 homes, you know, it's just not economically feasible for us to do the PUD regulations and amenities and open spaces. We just don't have that room and kind of availability.
I think there may be a little confusion here.
Oh, what's your point?
The motion was not to be.
The motion was not to be, for several meetings, actually, the motion was for him to make a decision as to whether he wanted to bring it in as planned unit development at the next meeting.
Yeah, that was my motion, see if they would want to bring it in as a PUD.
Correct. But it was to give them an option and give them the information needed to be able to make that that kind of that that decision. So it's, they're actually, they're only bringing it in one meeting.
Your point's well taken. And yes, we are getting off topic of the motion. But I think, anyway, the information need to get out anyway.
And and Mayor, like I said, I think that was a good suggestion. You know, last meeting, I think Commissioner Justice brought up the point about PUD. And we went back and did some research and we did talk with Mr. Malley as well. It's just not, you know, from an economically, you know, it's not viable for us to do the PUD requirement, PUD development for these eight to 10 homes in about four acres, right, where the actual homes will be built. But again, from, I think your major, major concern is about the rental contract, that this falling into the rental restrictions, you know, the blasting regulations. And what we've suggested is we will do deed restrictions. When we actually come back with the construction application, we will put, whether it's HOA rules or deed restrictions, when we subdivide this into individual lots, we will make sure that we, you know, just put that clause in, you know, that restrict, that restriction where the homeowner cannot sell to a rental company, right? You know, if an individual homeowner decides to rent his his or her own home, we can't do anything about it. But, you know, we will make sure, you know, we put a clause in where they can't sell to a rental company and make this a rental community, right, whether it's eight to 10 homes or whatever it is.
And thank you, sir, for. Yep. And all right, let me regroup here. And you're asking to be recognized, Commissioner Malley?
Well, when we met, we did talk about the PUD and I asked you to consider it. And you came back and you stated your reasons why you're not interested in the PUD. So they they've pretty much already made up their mind. They're not, they're not interested in the PUD. It's not financially feasible.
All right. So, all right, then the question on the furl. Anybody else speak on the viability of the furl? Commissioner, our Vice Mayor?
Actually, what I was looking at is that we're not looking so much as the viability of the furl as far as the time that it may be involved. You know, and if there's something going on that two weeks will make that difference, that would be actually the difference that would make it between us voting yes for a furl for two weeks to get with you and give you some information as to what it would take through the city. You know, some of the questions I noticed that Commissioner Malley was asking were very good questions, very good pointed questions. And then and questions that actually would mean a lot to a project. Unfortunately, what we're talking about here are really is yes or no as to whether or not it's going to be RS20, because you can give us any answer you want to give us. And we have to take you at your word. And then you can go in and do everything opposite of what you said. That's what the 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 PUD process captures. Now, again, I don't want to get into your planning process. That is not anything that has to do with us. That is strictly between you. And then you bring a plan to the city and we get to approve or disapprove that plan. There's a possibility that your RS20 zoning may not get approved tonight. You don't want to lose the vote. So what I'm asking for is give you an opportunity to come in with an option and make an informed decision as to whether or not you want that that planned unit development to be brought in. Or you want to proceed with the RS20 amendment that we made. And, you know, that's, that's what I'm asking for from this board tonight is to give you two weeks to, you know, for us to chat and and get you all the information.
Just like to ask the commissioners or even the city attorney about the suggestion about, you know, putting deed restrictions in place, right? Would that address some of the concerns?
I would ask the the city attorney to weigh in, but you can't put the the amount of dynamite in a deed restriction. You can't put things of that nature. And those are construction issues that you're not going to capture in a deed restriction. Mr. Marquetti, would you?
That's true. And if a two-week deferral gives you an opportunity for us to answer some questions you may have on the PUD and the cost and what additional cost, if any, it would have. We can't negotiate with you for zoning. They can require and put a condition in order to have your zoning changed. So even your agreement, I'll do this, I'll do that in return for this, we can't do that. That's contract zoning. And that would void the zoning. But we can require certain conditions which this board could put upon you receiving the RS15 or the RS20 now. So a two-week deferral will give you an opportunity to get with Ms. Hamlin or with me and see what kind of extra cost, if any, you would incur for a PUD, which then can incorporate a lot of these items. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Trevette?
No, thank you, Mr. Marquetti. No, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, again, for us to be deferring this, it's because there is a lot of questions involved here. And we want to make sure that the Board of Commission can, you know, obviously, either support this project or, you know, or else it could be turned down. So that's why I want to make sure that, yes, that you've been here a few times. And Mr. Liggins has been here for several months. But at the same time, we want to take this project as serious as possible and know that it's affecting two different parties.
Understand.
So that's what we're trying to take in consideration tonight.
And may I request, you know, for this project, right, again, I think, you know, we put that in the conceptual plan. The the commercial part in the front is, you know, our immediate need, you know, where we start, you know, working on the plans, you know, in the next six to 12 months. The residential portion in the back is long term for us. You know, we're not looking to develop that immediately. It'll be like two, three years from now. So, you know, may I request that we get the commercial part approved in the zoning? And then we'll come back with a fresh application. We'll just leave the back portion RS40 for now, right, you know, the current zoning. And then we'll come back, you know, with a fresh application later on for the back portion to do, you know, what maybe the part is right thing to do. We'll, we'll think more about that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Malley.
Did you just say you would be willing to leave the back portion RS40 for now?
For now, because, you know, that residential development for us, it was going to be long term, two, two years. Maybe we won't start that immediately, right? So we're focusing on the front piece first, make sure, you know, we get that sorted out, we have a good layout, you know, good plans for that. And then we'll start the back portion later on. Yes.
Okay. Because I also, well, I like that. I do. Because I also was going to talk to, talk tonight about doing an HOA with the 10% rental cap on the entire thing and the deed restrictions, which we had talked about. And I talked to Gino about it as well. But, you know, you can't put that in the deed until this gets approved. So it's more of a trust issue.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So how do we do this as far as if he's willing to drop the back zoning for now?
Let's get the Planning Director to to weigh in on that. If this is going to be a change, sends it back to the Planning Commission or if there's something we can do at the table or if it's even feasible.
I think it's something we can do tonight. I'll ask Mr. Marquetti. He's shaking his head yes. So the commercial portion up front and then.
That is, we we do have a motion to defer on the table at the moment. So we want to. I think that we think we got the mover for the motion and the second wishing to retract the deferral. We can retract it if there's no objections from the from the body here. Seeing none, we'll withdraw that. Okay, then let's recognize the Vice Mayor for another amendment.
What I would like to, at this point, amend this ordinance in that we, and I don't know that these numbers is, is 130.0 going to be the commercial or is that the? Right. Which one is the actual commercial piece? Okay. The, make sure we've got this in the minutes, that the commercial piece would be approved. CRC, correct. We would ask to vote on the commercial as CRC and that would be 130.0. And since this is all under, it's got two parcels under one ordinance, then I would request it 130.02 be removed from the ordinance.
Is 1302 the residential portion?
No, I thought that's what you said. This is 130. Okay, swap those numbers then.
This is two different parcels, one, two.
You've got the zoning split across those parcels.
Okay, then I've been confused. We're, we're splitting it. This is 10.49 acres.
Well, if I can jump in.
Go ahead, Mayor.
If we already have, we already have the the area defined for the which portion was CRC and which portion was RS15. What if we made an amendment just to remove the RS15 portion of this ordinance?
Well, it's actually been changed to RS20 now, per the amendment.
We can, we can say RS20. In fact, we can do, we can, we can make a motion to remove RS15 and RS20.
And just leave it RS40 at this point.
If I think we remove that, it will, it will keep the zoning as RS40, am I correct?
In the, in the rear and then.
I'm looking at Mr. Marquetti here.
The meets and bounds for the proposed commercial are in your ordinance.
So we'll just go by the existing meets and bounds definitions for the CRC?
Yes, sir.
Does everybody follow what we're, what we're doing?
That'll work. Yes.
Okay. Do you want to restate your motion or do you want me to?
What you said, sounds good to me.
We have a motion and you, and it was seconded. Well, a motion is second to remove the RS15 or 20 portion of the ordinance leaving the CRC. And we got a third on it now. So are we ready to vote or do we want to discuss this?
Please, no more discussion.
Okay, this is the Second Amendment for the ordinance here, which is to remove the residential portion of the, put under consideration for the ordinance here. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the ayes carry. So we're back on the ordinance as twice amended. Well, it's the original in in regard to the CRC portion only at this point. All right. Do we have any other discussion on this? Or are we ready to vote? All right, all in favor of the ordinance as twice amended, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I have that recorded as the ayes carrying it with a unanimous vote as twice amended. So you have.
Thank you.
You have a rezone for CRC on the front portion there.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that horse has been beat. We'll move into the new business portion of our agenda. We have six items under new business. I will start with the first, which is 11-1, an ordinance to rezone a single-family residential RS15 PUD and R10 planned unit development and adopt the preliminary master development plan for the Curd Road subdivision being located at 2844 Curd Road, map 54, parcel 73, 81, 82, in the city of Mount Juliet, Wilson County, Tennessee. Is there a motion? Got a motion in a second. It is on the floor. Any discussion? I will recognize the Vice Mayor.
This is a project coming on to Curd Road. There was some initial confusion. And I think it should have actually come up here and thinking that it was R10 as well. When it was sent to us, there were an additional 30 villa units that were attached in what was approved at the Planning Commission. Those 30 units have been taken out. And the actual overall lot size has increased. And it also takes out the RS10 portion of the zoning. And so now it is considered an R15 PUD, planned unit development, rather than a R15, RS15 slash R10.
Is it an RS15 or R15?
RS.
Thank you.
There are conditions. And some of these have, Mr. Barlow is still here. We're fortunate to have Mr. Barlow, our Public Works Director and Ms. Hamlin here tonight. So both can, they both worked very hard along with myself and and the Beazer folks to to come up with this. And these are the conditions. I think I sent this out. I don't know if everybody got that. There are, the first one being six-foot sidewalks from property to Dollar General, the center lane extended on Curd Road right of the way acquisition. And that's with help from the city if needed. If there's not additional enough right of way, then they would ask us to to help secure the right of way needed for the sidewalk project down Curd Road to the Dollar General. The variance, you know what? I think Mr. Barlow's got all this captured somewhere. If you want to go through that and anything you don't have, I've actually got some other stuff that.
Did, Vice Mayor, did you want me to run through the list that you had sent out today or?
If you wouldn't, and if there's anything that's not attached to that, because I'm going to ask that what we've got here be attached to the ordinance and and put in the minutes.
Okay, are are you, you driving in a substitution here?
Sure.
Are you driving in a substitution of what's on the table?
This is going to be added is what I'm going to ask for. It's not a substitution.
Okay.
These are just conditions that were, there are going to be some added that are probably not secured in the in the actual ordinance.
I would say that some are captured in here. There may be some variations, I think, in here. I know, let's see, packet page, what is this? 45, I believe, is the list that we had captured from the, from the Planning Commission. 45 and 46 packet pages. That's Public Works comments number one through eight. I think that what Vice Mayor Justice was referring to, the six-foot wide sidewalk connection from this property to Dollar General. Dollar General actually constructed a portion of sidewalk there, including a bridge over the stream crossing. They would be connecting to that section there where the bridge is built. I think the argument sidewalk to nowhere is made back then. So here we are, sidewalk to somewhere. There's the center turn lane. So let's see, let me go back. Let me match these up here, because a lot of these are already captured. Public Works comments number three coincides with comment number one that the Vice Mayor sent out. Addition of that comment number one, the center turn lane extended on Curd Road. So there is an existing center turn, but it doesn't go to this access. That would correspond with Public Works comment number four in the, in the, in your packet. Variance to Red Sea to allow modified access lanes is comment number two, what Vice Mayor sent. And shared drives, developer will install two speed tables per plan. Now, that is updated. We have talked with the developer on that. We are okay with with the shared drives on that access lane on Road C. That's the part that's going out to Beckwith Road. We had concerns about speeds on that segment, also with the curb cuts. So the developer has done well to minimize those curb cuts with shared, shared driveways there and also showed two speed tables. I know that's part of the updated plan. Comment number three that the Vice Mayor sent out, talking about the signal warrant at Curd Road and Golden Bear Gateway, that corresponds with comment number six that's captured. So that one's already captured. Amenity at the 71st Certificate of Occupancy. Jennifer is the, Jennifer Hamlin, is that already captured anywhere, the 71st?
I believe the Planning Commission stated a 71st building permit.
Okay, so that is captured in the ordinance as as.
That's the amenity.
The Park Road Parking Lot and Restroom Facility will be constructed by the 141st CO, paid for by the developer. That is, I see that captured in the planning comment number 15. So that is already in there within the ordinance that you have before you. Blasting letter sent to all residents at Parish Place. I don't know if that's captured or not.
It is captured.
It is, okay. Blasting letter sent to all residents within 500 feet of the site. Is that captured already?
It is.
16. Yes, thank you. Next is two visits from the pre-blast survey company. Uh, we do have pre and post blast surveys there in comment number 16, so that's captured. Uh, reduce the blast from two feet per second to one foot per section, per second? Oh, oh, inches, sorry. Or is it minute? What is it? I'm not familiar with blast, two inches. Okay. I'm an engineer, I'm not a blaster.
That is captured.
Okay. One item is the maintain seven and a half foot setback for homes.
No, the planning commission recommended eight foot side setbacks.
So I think we have a discrepancy on that. Um, that, that would be something I would say to settle. Another one that Vice Mayor sent out here, I know this has not been captured. Pay $1,250 per lot to the city of Mount Juliet. That would be paid to the city of Mount Juliet, $150,000. So the total of that would come to roughly $276,000. Uh, they would pay, the developer would pay $150,000 of that fee by the 25th CO so that the eastbound right turn lane on Lebanon Road at Golden Bear Gateway can be constructed by the city of Mount Juliet. If, uh, y'all recall, we had discussed that with the, uh, convenience market meeting prior. The remaining 126,000 and change will be paid over the remaining 196 lots. No fee will be paid on the initial 25 COs as dedicated to the city's cost to Golden Bear. I'm assuming to the, uh, Golden Bear turn lane at Golden Bear. So that is an addition. Uh, there are some items noted here to be removed. Uh, I was not necessarily clear on these. Uh, the one, one actually does make sense. Uh, it mentions the Beckwith Road improvements at Lebanon Road. We did include in comment number eight, so that's on the top of packet page 46. I've discussed that with Vice Mayor and those, those comments were actually already captured as part of the Bradshaw PUD. Uh, we had done that just, just as a cover, as, as part of our, uh, traffic study analysis. Uh, but with it previously being captured, we are, we are okay with, uh, removal of that. I was not clear about the item to be removed, number two, Lebanon Road widening. Uh, and additionally, the westbound right turn lane onto Bender's Ferry. Uh, and then last sidewalks on Beckwith Road to Lebanon Road. Um, that one, I'm not sure, uh, what that was referring to. I think there probably needs to be some, uh, discussion on these eight-foot setback or seven and a half-foot setback and items to be removed.
If I continue on this. One of the, on the Beckwith Road improvements, as he said, at Lebanon Road, the section there, that's actually been covered under the Bradshaw Farm section already, so that would be a duplication, actually. And puts some angst on the developer. Really means nothing to us because we have zero jurisdiction over there. Uh, nothing we can do about that. That's all county. The westbound right turn lane onto Bender's Ferry is a funding item only. Uh, in their minds, they don't want to fool with construction. They, they would rather give us the money in paper, the city to do the construction. And I think Mr. Barlow would prefer that they do it so we don't have to. Is that correct statement?
I need another project like I need another hole.
So I'll let somebody else fight that battle. I'm not going to get in the middle of it. Uh, the sidewalks on Beckwith Road, Lebanon Road, we have zero jurisdiction to even approve anything we put down there. So I mean, it's kind of a moot point. And there would be no way to maintain those.
And they would, it wouldn't be allowed. It's not even, you know, not even go there.
So what I did do is I put down here, the Curd Road sidewalks were estimated to $100,000. The park upgrades, the road to the park, the parking lot and the bathrooms. The value associated with that is approximately $830,000 and that's for the road, bathrooms and the, the parking lot. And then the voluntary fee for the off-site improvements to the area being at Golden Bear, being the right-hand turn lane off of Lebanon Road onto Bender's Ferry Road, come to $276,250. Total number of homes where it was to 28 originally?
208.
What, sorry?
208 lots. 236 units.
Well, yeah, 236 units. It's down, down to 218. So we've lowered that down considerably there. The actual developer contribution on this winds up being something I've never seen before in this city's $5,533 per, per lot. I, I would like to say that, you know, I would, you know, we got in and negotiated a lot of this, but a lot of it actually was voluntary on their part, which is not seen very often by developers in our city.
Okay, that's, that's what you, you sent out, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's not what we have at the table?
It is not. Uh, and again, when I, you should have this at the table because I sent that out earlier today in an email.
I, I've gotten a lot of emails today, so.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that was sent out, uh, just kind of outlining what was already captured. As far as what we got at the table, it's a little bit different because there was some confusion that came from the planning commission to the city commission. So this is the first reading on this. What I would like to do is we could capture the changes, uh, get this approved and then get it to the planning commission so that they can go through and actually, they'll have to reapprove this, is my understanding, that, you know, that's correct. But that allows us to kind of get, get moving forward with it.
Well, we.
And to get the options to go along with, or the, uh, changes.
We've got a, we've got almost a, a month before the next planning commission. Why, why wouldn't we just defer this and have time to take another couple of weeks to look this over? I mean, it's quite a bit of changes.
I would ask probably at this point, I mean, once it comes down to a deferral, you and I both know that that, that comes down to a matter of timing. Uh, so I mean, I would ask probably our staff and the developer himself to make a comment as to the advisability of deferral. That's not something I'm prepared to talk about.
I.
He's here in the audience, I think, if, uh.
But I, I guess my point is, the next planning commission is October 21st, so we have to skip a meeting anyway. So if we hear it, whether we hear it tonight or the 27th, we have to skip the 11th, so our next opportunity for second reading will be October 25th. I'm, I'm getting head shakes.
The, the date sounds appropriate, yes. Again, I would ask the, the developer to make that comment. I don't know what the advisability of deferral is. Uh, I think probably there's some timing issues getting involved here because they're not going to be able to get on to the planning commission. Uh, under normal circumstances in October, would they?
Uh, I would love to go on October, October 21st.
If we deferred tonight, we could put it on the 27th, September 27th VOC. It could go to the planning commission the 21st and back to us October 25th.
Is that the second reading on October 25th?
Yes.
Yeah, because we got to skip the 11th, 11th anyway, correct? Because we got to skip a meeting so we could read it, first reading the 27th, skip the 11th and it'll hit the planning commission on the 21st and be back to us on 25th. If staff can work some kind of magic to get it on the agenda a day after the deadline.
We'll have to upload everything first.
But again, I would probably ask the developer for, if there was something, some reason for deferral. I don't think it actually changes or alters the actual second reading anyway, does it?
Since it needs to go back to the PC in October. Deferring it to the VOC September 27th for first reading does not delay the second reading of the VOC if staff can get it from the 20th first, October 21st Planning Commission. The VOC agenda would have been published the 20th, October 20th. Planning Commission will not hear it to the 21st, the day after the agenda is published. They will have to get everything uploaded on the 22nd. I would have to amend the agenda for it to be heard on second reading on Monday, the 25th.
If not, November 8th would be the.
Correct.
The second reading. I don't know how to get around either one of those two dates with the amount of changes here. Am I, am I missing something?
I, I talked to the city attorney, he didn't have a problem with us going through this tonight unless there's somebody's, you know, unless there's some reason.
I don't think it makes any difference to the end date, whether we do it tonight or the next, in two weeks.
That would be, again, I'd ask staff to comment on that. You started talking about these dates, you're going to get lost to last year's history.
The end date is the absolute same.
We would just make the commitment to push it through and get it uploaded for your.
As soon as the planning commission over, we'll sure have to get everything.
We'll have to.
To me, you will get a second updated agenda on Friday, October 22nd.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion to defer one meeting in a second. Uh, we're on the advisability deferment. I think, I, my point with deferment is it doesn't change the end date unless, unless somebody can point me out as being wrong. But the end dates for when this comes out of the planning commission to get to the VOC on second reading is the same date. So I don't think it has any bearing on the approval timeline of this. And the reason I asked for deferral is I, I spent a lot of time, uh, on the existing one on here and have it. I know there was a lot of conversations went around the changes on these things and I, and I, I truly do believe that this is a better, better route for everybody involved. I would just feel more comfortable, personally speaking, voting for something after having time to read it off, because I, I do think we're going in the right direction. But with these types of changes, I think it, and I, and you know, jump in here, staff, anyone, if I'm wrong on this, but these, these changes will have to push it back to the planning commission to be heard again and the end date on it won't change whether we read it tonight or if we take two weeks to go over it as a body and then come back and vote on it as a whole.
Oh, the only thing that I would ask is somehow or another, what we've got captured here that I sent on that email be sent to the planning commission for their approval based on that, this as well. So that they're actually getting a full picture of, of what's been seen as far as the road connections and the.
We, we have, we have an amendment to defer on, on the table. If, if it's, if it would be appropriate, I'd make it, if it would help, I'd, I would, uh, ask to rescind that and then vote on adopting these changes so the changes can go to the planning commission. Would that be, are the, these changes can be captured in what's presented to us in two weeks?
Correct.
Mr. Mark Cady is looking at the ceiling and his eyes going back and forth. That means he's considering that, Mayor.
That will work or just convey that to staff and staff will present that to the planning commission for their recommendation or non-recommendation here.
I, I think actually what we'd be talking about would be amending the actual ordinance and then deferring the amended ordinance is what the mayor's talking, is that correct?
So too, right, that's what Mayor Menace keeps saying. He's like, well, we're looking at an old plan. I think he needs to, a motion, he might be speaking out of school here, looking for a motion to look at the plans as you've been presenting tonight. Because the ordinance states R-10, RS-15.
So that.
Yeah, I'll, you were second. No objections, we'll draw that, uh, motion to defer and get back on to the ordinance here on it. But I'm going to ask for a deferral after we get, whatever we pin down. So that we have an opportunity to go over the full thing. It gets publicly advertised and everybody knows we're on the same page. I just, again, I'm not, not casting any, um, any negativity on what's being presented. It's just, I have not had any time to really go through any of this stuff, so.
No, it's perfectly understandable. What I would then, Mayor, if I may, what I'd like to do is amend the ordinance by adding, uh, numbers one through and 11 that I had to email to Ms. Luckett, and I think number 12 is.
Okay, that's one, three and 11?
No, one through, I'm sorry, one through 11, yes, sir.
And that's what, the planning and zoning portion or the public works?
That is actually a combined portion. It's the section about the sidewalks, speed tables. It's all, some of it, as the, Mr. Barlow, uh, pointed out, some of this is already captured, but what I've done is put it all into one format so that all the pieces are actually in one place for everybody to look at. The only part that I've changed on that, and I would like to add to the amendment, would be that number 12 being the property is being purchased by Beazer Homes. The bathrooms, the parking lot and the road will be built by Beazer with the parking lot and bathrooms being deeded back to the city. That part I was not in the ordinance. I don't think it was made clear. Ms. Hamblin and I talked about that today and, and that needed to be actually cleared up.
It's being purchased by Beazer and will be deeded back to the city?
After completion, yes, of the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still in the first 11 points. Is this, um, do we have a printed copy of this or is this just?
You shouldn't, I just, what I sent, have you got it?
You got a printed copy, yeah, I'd rather, I need to read them for the record. I got it. So I got, and I'll read these 11 changes in, as part of the ordinance for substitution. If, if it's, if you agreeable, we'll read these first 11, vote on them, and then we'll capture the second piece separately.
Correct.
Okay, I'll read these. And who seconded, did anybody second? All right, we got a motion second. I'm going to read these 11. Uh, this is Curd Road. Number one, six-foot sidewalks from property to Dollar General. Center turn lane extended to Curd Road. Uh, right-of-way acquisition helped from the city if needed. Uh, two variants on Road C to allow modified access lane and shared drives. The developer will insist, install, excuse me, two speed tables per plan. Signal warrants at the 100 and 200 CO for Curd Road and Golden Bear Parkway. Uh, amenity at the 71st CO. Uh, fifth Park Road parking lot and restrooms facility will be constructed by the 141st CO and paid for by the developer. Uh, the sixth blasting letter sent to all residents at Parish Place. Seven blasting letters sent to all residents within 500 feet of the site. Uh, eight, two visits per pre-blast survey company. Uh, nine, reduce blasting from two seconds to one second, 50% less than state man, state mandated maximum. 10, uh, maintain seven and a half feet setbacks for homes. And 11, pay 102, oh, excuse me, pay 1,250 per lot. 276,250 to the city of Mount Juliet. Pay the city of Mount Juliet 150K for the 276,250 dollar fee paid by the 25th CO. So an eastern right, so an eastern right turn lane can be constructed on Lebanon Road onto Golden Bear Parkway by the city of Mount Juliet. The remaining 126,250 will be paid, will be paid over the remaining 196 lots. No fee will be paid on the initial 25 COs, COs as is dedicated to the city's cost to Golden Bear. And that is the 11 items in the amendment. Is there any discussion on these 11 items? And I, uh, I trust the city recorder has a copy of what I read. Thank you.
One point.
Yes, sir.
There is one section in here, uh, where it says, uh, onto Golden Bear Parkway by the city of Mount Juliet. Uh, I would like to correct that if I could. It's a typo. That is M-T period, not M-O-U-N-T.
I did notice that. Without objection, we'll, we'll correct the spelling of the city name.
And anywhere else it's located. Actually, for some reason, none of that popped up.
Vice Mayor's pointed out that the city is properly spelled as M-T period Juliet. Art, any other questions, comments on these 11 before we vote? All in favor of the 11 items that I read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? That passes unanimously. And I believe you had another amendment for us?
Yes, sir. Um, again, after talking to Ms. Hamblin, she suggested that we needed to capture this to make sure it was actually uh, in the ordinance, but the property is part of the property that Beazer is purchasing from the city of Mount Juliet. And this property will be where the bathrooms for the park, the parking lot, and also the road itself that will be built to go up to Beazer, or I'm sorry, go up to the, the park. All of that will be built. It's actually talked about in earlier places, but it's not in here that the, they will own this property. They will build the public portion of this and then they would deed that back to the city of Mount Juliet. So it's not in there anywhere. I want to make sure that that's located in the ordinance so that we.
I, I think I see what it, see it here on the map, but we need to capture it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do we have, do we have this green box on the map? I'll second that. We have the screen box on the map, um, identified, maybe means about. Identified, maybe means of bounds or?
We can get those by the time it gets back to you.
Okay. Commissioner Malley.
Okay, Vice Mayor, what you just said about deeding it back to the, is this up there where the parking lot is or is this? Where, where exactly is it?
The parking lot and the bathrooms uh, are all going to be under the city's control, not the HOA's control.
Oh, okay, because it did state HOA.
Right. I made that, um, comment to Mr. Justice today and that's when he spoke with the applicant and they determined that they would deed that back to us so that we could maintain it rather than depending on their HOA to maintain that for us.
Okay.
And that's in the new packet that I gave you, just this green box area.
Okay.
All right.
So the, the motion would be the green box area is deeded back to the city. Subject to staff getting a legal definition of that by the next meeting.
Meets and bounds.
I do not know a better way to say that.
Um, it's also on the, the plans that they gave you, this trailhead bathroom, parking lot. So we'll get those meets and bounds defined from the applicant before it comes to you guys again.
Uh, would it be advisable to wait to vote on it at that point or do you need to capture it to go to the planning commission?
I'll make sure to get with the applicant to have all of these, um, what you read tonight incorporated in our plans.
We do have that as a motion on the table. I'm comfortable voting with it as, as I stated it, as the area captured on the map, just so staff has direction. Is there any comments or questions on that? All right, all in favor of the, of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so that's, correct me if I'm wrong, our second amendment to it. Are there any other questions or comments?
Are we back on the initial?
There should be a motion to defer at this point.
Yeah, we're back on the initials. So if, if you have anything else to add or questions or if we can entertain a motion to defer either one.
I had a question for Andy before he got away. Um, if you.
That's not really us requiring anything per se. We're just recognizing that the county may have their own requirements that they're going to look for right there. We, we experienced that. Kelsey Glenn's a good example. Bradshaw Farms is another one and others that we have that access to county roadway. Uh, we're just trying to do that just as a matter of formality for, I guess, a coordination per se. Uh, recognizing, okay, this is outside of our jurisdiction. We understand that. Any improvements there would be subject to the county road commission.
Okay, would that also include a northbound left turn lane?
Um, my experience with the county commission has been a turn lane. Um, I think Kelsey Glenn actually just had a right turn and others have had, I'm thinking Beckwith Crossing, I'm thinking Walton's Grove. I think additionally, um, uh, Bradshaw, I think have all just been a right turn D cell into the site. Um, those, I don't think any of those have a left turn lane unless I'm mistaken. Um, again, it'll be up to, it'll be up to the county road commission. I'll try to get a confirmation for you on that.
Okay. Well, that was my question for him. So I had some conditions I wanted to add, but if we're going to defer, I'll just wait.
I think Commissioner Hefner had a question.
I have a question for our city attorney. Part of this is, involves, um, Beazer acquiring city parkland, city land, and, and not in, nowhere in this packet have I seen any, any of those agreements. Is that something that we're going to see?
Isn't this our contract? Yeah, they paid earnest money and everything. This contract signed month and a half, two months ago.
So they've already acquired the land? They've already acquired the land?
Yes.
Okay. That answered my question.
I'll send that to you right now.
And Vice Mayor?
Uh, actually, Commissioner Malley had some, some conditions that she wanted to talk about, and I think it'd be a good idea if we hear those commission, conditions because if there's something that we can get to the planning commission for them to consider when they goes back in front of them, it'd probably be a good idea to have all conditions. I mean, she may put something out there we hadn't thought about. If she does that, then we may throw us another curve.
I, I'm not opposed if, if, if you, I mean, it's within your right to both of them tonight or.
I was going to ask another question too, if the, um, like we did at Wintry Pine, the 10% um cap on the rentals for the entire PUD, is that, did that have to go back through the planning commission? I can't remember. It didn't. Yeah, okay. All right. My recommendations were going to be, and first, I have to say that when, uh, the city purchases 57 acres for the park uh, known as Tomlinson, and then we agreed to sell a portion of it to Beazer later. And their conditions were the restroom, parking lot, and a constructing a road from the back part of the community connecting to Beckwith. Uh, it's my bad, I guess, not for asking questions. So I did not realize it was going to be a through road. I thought it was just going to be something they were going to do for the park. But anyway, I guess that's my bad. Um, so, um, I would like to motion that the same 10% cap for the entire PUD for a rental cap uh, in, in addition to no person can own more than two units. Um, and then overall on the entire PUD, a, a max of 10% um, cannot, rentals cannot exceed that entire 10%. I would like to include the same one that we did for Wintry Pines in this. And also would like to, um, the tree protection plan to save as many trees as possible. And also I know nothing was stated about the vinyl because they're going to use something else, but I would like it stated in there that. Yeah.
Would you be, would you be amenable to doing them one at a time?
Yeah, one at a time. All right. So I would like to motion to add the same 10% rental cap o, over the entire PUD that we did for Wintry Pine.
Okay, that's good. Got a second over here. This is on the floor. It's a 10% cap on rentals, no more than two owners. Have I got?
Yes, for the, uh, entire PUD. And I have the Wintry Pine contract here, but yeah.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of the amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Back to you, Commissioner.
Okay, um, I would like to, um, implement a tree protection plan just to try and save as many trees as possible. Uh, I know they have to, you know, do what they have to do, but, um, I, I like that. I, I'd like to, to save as many trees as possible. So it's called a tree protection plan that, um, planning was also going to do at Chandler. That, to provide a tree survey. Okay, I can't hardly hear you.
That's okay. I'm so sorry. They, um, they provided a tree survey for the Chandler.
They did? Okay.
And so you can ask for a tree survey or you can have them work with staff on a tree protection plan?
All right, um, well, I would like to add a tree survey plan to help protect as many as possible.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion, a second, a tree, I guess it's inventory?
Inventory.
Eh, okay. It's on the floor, so I'll, I'll ask, what are, what are we driving at when we get the inventory? I mean, we just know how many trees we have or?
Well, they, uh, the, the landscape architect will identify any trees that are, um, should be saved on site. So for instance, they wouldn't save, they wouldn't save a trash tree.
What if the tree is right in the middle of the lot where the house goes?
Well, of course, that one would be cut down.
I, I, yeah, I'm just asking.
I think that she could state that it would be up to, um, staff to go over that and approve it.
Okay.
I mean, we're not going to be.
And it would be up to staff to finalize that.
So you're.
Yeah, condition on staff approval.
Approval, you seconded it. You, okay.
Yes.
So tree preservation plan based on staff approval. Good with the language?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other discussions, questions, or comments on this? Vice Mayor?
Never stopped me before, so I'll just go ahead and say it. I don't want anybody to get the idea that we're tree huggers. That's not the idea. Uh, the idea is that we want to do all we can for the conservation of the trees at the same time providing a quality development.
Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm not worried about the tree hugger image necessarily, but I, I love, I love trees, love, love it, but I, I guess my concern is I don't know what we're opening up here. I feel like, I feel like it's, in a sense, it, it's in the developer's best interest to preserve everything they can anyway. And we, I feel like we're just adding more red tape, I guess is my concern. That the, that, because if I, if I'm a developer, do I want to pay somebody to take down a big old tree that's, that's going to add value to my lot or, or not? I mean, it's just, I just worry we're creating more red tape than we are good.
I, I, if, I, I don't disagree with you. I will go ahead and while I'm making the, the tree huggers angry, I'll go ahead and make Peter angry. I'll be climbing a tree very soon killing deer. So I don't have a problem with trees. I like trees, large trees. Uh, but I do.
Did you have something?
I've got a little bit of experience with this. Uh, I log my farm. So, but to do that, you'd have to go in and select cut. Um, you, you're going to potentially lose a lot of development, land that's decided to be, um, set to have homes, sites on it. Um, I would say within the open boundaries, right, the buffer zone that may be.
The perimeter.
The perimeter that we protect the, the, the native trees of Tennessee, not the exotics. Um, so if you reduce or eliminate the exotic trees and keep the native trees within that buffer area, I think is a, is a fair ask.
Are you proposing an amendment to just include the buffer area?
Uh, yes, I'll state that by way of.
You got a second on that, okay. So by your amendment, if they cut down any Bradford pears they found out there, it would be totally cool.
Are they indigenous or?
They're not. They're, they're a mutant tree from, well, anyway.
And hack berries too, they can go.
Any other questions or comments on this, uh, amendment as amended? Ready to vote? All in favor of a tree preservation subject to staff approval for the buffer areas, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Uh, Commissioner Malley, do you have?
One more. Um, I noted that it's not stated in here, um, but I, I just wanted to eliminate it if possible. I would like it stated that the 10% variance does not include vinyl with the exception, of course, of the soffits, which they, you know, that's understood.
Is that okay that we say that with that new state law?
Yeah.
That we can't, that we're not prohibiting?
Yeah, we do some things aesthetics wise, yes.
Could you, would you repeat that? Uh, no vinyl with the exception of?
Yeah, with the 10% variance that's, um.
Do we allow vinyl in the 10% variance?
Uh, they ask for hardy.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but I just wanted it written that none is allowed with the exception of the soffits.
Well, I, I think, I think if you said with the exception, you, it might be implied that you're okaying vinyl in the soffits.
Well, that's understood. They have to use vinyl there.
No.
No, no, no.
Right.
No, that's hardy board.
No, I mean, underneath the.
The flashing, she's speaking.
You're talking soffit area.
Soffit, yeah.
Of the, I follow you. I think it's the, um.
Yeah, I mean, we had the, we had this conversation. I, I talked to Will about it.
And the, and we're doing the hardy board for the, the trim above.
Yeah.
It's okay. I'll second that then.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on it? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, eyes carry. All right, we're back on the ordinance as amended six times. Six times a lot for first reading. Any comments, questions? All right, um, all in favor of the ordinance as amended six times, please. You want to, you're going to make a motion to defer, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. He's paying attention.
Yeah, kind of scared me because I had a motion to defer.
Awesome. We got a second, motion to defer. All right, um, motion to defer one meeting? Any, any questions or comments? All right, all in favor of deferral by one meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes carry.
Are we deferring this one meeting?
Deferring it one meeting.
So the first reading will be after the planning. Right?
No.
No.
All right, if you're following along at home, we have cap, we have completed two of our agenda items out of the 13, so I think the next one will go a little quicker. This is 11-2, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet approximately 19.18 acres. Property known as the Chandler Road subdivision property and being found at 1076 Chandler Road map 76 parcel 16.05 and being located in within the city's urban growth boundary. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, uh, this is on the floor. The applicant has requested a deferral to allow this to catch up with the annexation. I'll just.
This is the annexation.
Rezone.
Yes, it says, defer the rezone to catch up with it.
Okay, all right.
Maybe I said that backwards, but it's, the point is, is to run them both at the same time as I think what I'm reading into it.
To defer.
We got a motion to defer. I'll second, uh, make my one comment, which is to the planning director. I'm, I'm not sure about this in the code zoning, but it is there, so we can take that off. Any other questions or comments on the, um, advisability of deferral? That was for one meeting. All right, all in favor of deferral for one meeting, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That's deferred one meeting unanimously. Next item of business is 11-3, an ordinance to rezone from commercial town center CTC to commercial interchange plan unit development CIPUD and adopt a preliminary master development plan for velocities, L C City Motorsports being located at 100 Northwest Rutland Road map 76 parcel 70.06 in the city of Mount Juliet, Wilson County, Tennessee. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second is on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of?
I have, I have.
Oh, we got a, we got to take her. All right, Mr. Malley.
For, um, Andy. I was reading in there the conditions, um, but it, you said staff recommends extending the sidewalk to North Mount Juliet Road on Northwood. So that, I didn't read that as a condition. I only read it as a recommendation. So do we need to motion for that?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, I would like to motion for, that the sidewalk be extended on Northwest Rutland all the way to South, or North Mount Juliet Road.
I'll wait it again. Yeah, please.
Um, motion to extend the sidewalks on Northwest Rutland all the way to North Mount Juliet Road.
Okay, got a motion and a second. It's on the floor. Um, any discussion on this? Commissioner Trevette?
Um, is that for both sides or is that just for one side?
That's a good question, Commissioner. Uh, that is just for one side. Southern Bank across the, uh, across the road has already built that. And then First Baptist Church in addition is going to be extending that even further south. So that, that's on the north side of Northwest Rutland. This would be on the south side of Northwest.
And how, how many crosswalks will we have to be able to get over to the other side if there's any? Or, or is there, been any requests for that?
There's, there's been no request for that.
Is there a, uh, is, is there a reason for it, for anything you could think of? I haven't, well, I mean, I've been driven up that road, but lately.
Being a member of First Baptist Church, uh, yes, sometimes overflow parking does utilize that back parking lot behind Pinnacle. Uh, there is, there is some there. Uh, there's also, uh, additional parking that's utilized on Southern Bank's property, you know. Um, there is a connection from Southern Bank to the church's property, but, um, occasionally, yes.
So would it be beneficial to install two crosswalks and have signs up that way or would that be something that would be?
I would probably just one.
City can do later after a survey?
Yeah, I would, I would probably just go one crosswalk.
Okay.
Limit the locations, limit the exposure.
That'd be something the city would do or the, the project? That'd be something the city would do, or the, the project?
I would recommend-
Is there some ADA compliance when you're crossing there?
I have, I recommend it be done as part of the project.
Because we don't want to cut back out the sidewalk for the ADA, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
That's a question, do, do we have all the right of way necessary to construct the sidewalk?
Yes, um, from what we've looked at, I know when Southern Bank, uh, they actually widened the road to their side, and so they didn't utilize any of the roadway on the south side of the road. Might be some drainage to rework. Right now, I know that's a ditch section right there, and so you might have to do some, um, there might have to be some revisions there. I know Southern Bank put in curbing gutter. Uh, that might be necessary to try to fit everything within the right of way, but it's totally doable.
Okay. Any other questions or comment on the, on the motion?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Ken, my understanding is they're coming off of North Mount Juliet Road, they're not coming off of Northwest Rutland with their road, correct? Or their entrance?
Well, they have access both places.
I'm sorry?
They have access both places. As far as the way that I know that staff has worked with, uh, the engineer and the developer on this, we have concerns. When I have concerns about entry from North Mount Juliet Road, we have concerns about, especially for delivery trucks. I think with this type of business, I don't think you're going to get the large type trucks that you're going to get with your typical dealerships. Uh, but you will have delivery trucks delivering vehicles. Uh, and so we want those to be directed to Northwest Rutland to access the red light to take that safe, safe left, so.
I haven't seen a pud here, or, or the actual plan here. I'm seeing a preliminary master development plan, but I'm not seeing-
That's what I'm looking for right here.
Okay, so they're going to be coming through Pinnacle Bank rather than the actual portion that touches Northwest Rutland then?
Uh, yeah, so Pinnacle Bank, their existing access they have at Northwest Rutland, that whole drive is a, is a access easement.
So it's access easement for the entire piece of property, not just Pinnacle Bank's exclusive?
Right.
Okay, all right, that, that answers my question, thank you.
Certainly.
All right, any other questions?
I have, Andy, sorry. Um, I'm trying to find in here, um, turn lanes on Northwest Rutland.
Commissioner, would, would you be agreeable to voting on the first amendment first? All right.
Sure.
Any other, any other questions on amendment that's on the table now? Commissioner Trevette?
So I would like to amend your amendment to add in the crosswalks, or the crosswalk, and go ahead and add the ADA ramp as well, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
All right.
Second.
Would you be agreeable to saying per staff approval?
Per staff approval, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any discussion on the amendment as amended?
At the cost of the developer.
At, yeah, at the cost of the developer.
Thank you.
Captured on there for as well.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other discussion on this? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. We amended it once, and you had us-
Turn lanes?
So that's a good question. Uh, when we looked at this, uh, use here, it's a very, actually, actually a very low traffic generator, so low it did not even require a traffic study. Um, and from looking at this, from realizing that the, I'd say almost all of their traffic is going to be going to and from Mount Juliet Road, uh, we didn't, uh, we didn't, uh, see any need for requiring any left turn lanes in, into the site from Northwest Rutland Road. There's very little traffic on that segment of road as it sits today, and so, uh, that's not our primary focus as far as the way the trip's going to be distributing in and out of the site. So, uh, we didn't consider that as a factor as part of this development.
Okay, because as the, um, neighbor pointed out, there's going to be 18-wheelers coming in and out, so is there enough room there?
Our, our understanding from this is that the ingress to the site is primarily going to be coming from Mount Juliet Road, and then the egress to exit is going to be going out Northwest Rutland, especially for those delivery, uh, for those delivery trucks. Whether they're 18-wheelers, or whether they're more like flatbed trucks, uh, or box trucks, or anything like that. That's our understanding, is that they'd be making that route, even if they did come in from Northwest Rutland Road, uh, being that they're such a low generator, the right turn volumes in there, based on the volumes that were there, um, you know, don't have, don't know what those numbers would be exactly, but the fact that the threshold was so low, I really, really doubt that a right turn lane would be warranted.
All right, so exiting, uh, on Northwest with those, say it's an 18-wheeler, you know, turning left to head toward Mount Juliet Road, um, the road is not that wide, so, you know, how 18-wheelers are, they're- Is there literally room?
Well, so with the improvements that Southern Bank did, and then in addition that First Baptist is doing, that's actually a three-lane section in front of where this access is, because there's a left turn that's going into the church's, uh, access. And so they would, they would have that, basically it's 36-foot of pavement, that they'd be able to make that turn. Obviously, we'd want to take a look at the truck turn movements, we will when we get into more finalized design. That's more into the site plan level, that we want to make sure that those trucks, because we're more concerned about how they're circulating in and around the site. We really don't want those trucks exiting on Mount Juliet Road there at the, at Pinnacle Bank's access to Mount Juliet Road. I, I think that's a, a safety nightmare.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Well, I thought about saving the trees around the perimeter. I'll just go ahead and do it. If we could have a, do a motion to save as many trees as possible around the perimeter.
Have a motion to save as many trees as possible around the perimeter.
Yeah.
Hey, we have a second on that. Any discussion on saving as many trees around the perimeter as possible? Let me get you-
Questy- 30 foot, is that what that is? How tall is this privacy fence? Okay.
To be vinyl of some sort?
Low maintenance fencing.
Aluminum was one of the options.
Is that a standard buffer?
We require our ordinance of wood fence. And asking for that low maintenance, oh, fencing, just due to maintenance, lack of maintenance, we see it throughout the city.
Is this a wooded buffer, tree buffer, what was it look like? I mean, I mean, is it going to be existing, you're going to leave the existing, or?
They can utilize the existing, should they save them like Mr. Malley, um, and then they can just supplement those plannings.
Got it, okay, thank you.
I have a quick, just a quick question.
Commissioner Malley?
Just a quick question. Um, I know the one neighbor, I don't know if it's you or another one, I was reading in the minutes, because this project is elevated somewhat, um, they had asked for some really tall bascaring trees, and I couldn't hear everything you said over there, so I don't know, you may have said something about that.
I did not say anything about that. I think CJ, um, the applicant, made the commitment to, to provide some taller trees at the time of planning, is that accurate?
Okay. Okay.
Like the city manager wanted to be recognized?
Yeah, Mayor, pointing for clarification, just from a staff level, Commissioner, I agree with you 100%. Staff does usually try to encourage development to save as much of the buffer as natural, or as possible. And a lot of times, it's just oftentimes the underbrush they cut out, and then they'll add a fence or some smaller greenery, so that's a good point. I just want to let you know from a staff level, we do encourage developers to save as much of the bu, natural buffer as we can. And from a cost perspective, it saves them money as well. That's a very good point, is basically what I'm saying.
That's kind of my thoughts on it. It, it doesn't make a lot of financial sense to cut stuff down, just have to re-plan it. Yes. All right, any other discussion on the, um, save as many trees as possible amendment in the buffer area? All right, all in favor of the, uh, amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. All right, any other discussion on this item? Ready to vote? City recorder, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I have this, two amendments on this? Two, okay. All right, all in favor of the ordinance as amended two times, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. 11-4, an ordinance amending Part B of the Unified Development Code of the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, known as the Zoning Regulations Ordinance 2001-29 adopted October 8, 2001, as amended by amending Article 5, 104, 4, Development Standards for, for Single Family Residential, Article 6, 103, 7, Design Standards for Commercial Structures, and Article 7, 103, 9, Building Designs for Industrial Structures. Have a motion and a second. All right, any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Uh, that carries unanimously. 11-5, an ordinance of the City of Mount Juliet establishing rules for city commission meetings. I'll make a motion, is there a second? It's got a second. Any discussion on this item? Commissioner Malley?
Okay, um, reading over this, it just seems very broad and a lot of gray areas. Seems like mainly it's addressing the public.
It is.
The public addressing the board, yeah, mainly. But it doesn't seem to address board members personally attacking other board members in a slanderous manner. Is that in here, or is it, is it not? Am I overlooking it?
It's not captured in there, that's captured under Robert's rules, so I, I felt it was a little redundant, and it's at it. I've got something drawn up, I just, I just chose not to bring it. I, I'm, I'm hoping we don't need to get any more defined than what Robert's rule says. And, uh, I'm taking the approach, you know, just based on the risks and history, our code says we go by Robert's rules. We've been, um, a laxed version of Robert's rules up here, and I just, I just plan to call it by the book best I can.
Okay, um, third, whereas, where it talks about no member of the commission or public should be embarrassed. Just curious of the definition of embarrassed, because one person might be embarrassed by something, and then someone else may not be?
That's a fair call out. Um, I'll tell you, I, I took these segments from an existing city, and what, what I did was, after doing some reading, it was class of, it, it, the way it was in the, if you, if you take action to, um, stop somebody from talking, or stop somebody in your meeting, and you have to take it to the extreme, which is ask them to leave, uh, you can find yourself maybe unfavorable position behind this, in front of a judge, if you do not have written rules and procedures in place. So that was the, um, attend of this, it can be interpreted, uh, by the chair in any way, but according to Robert's Rules of Order, any member has, has the, uh, ability to appeal the ruling of the chair and call for a vote on that. So that was kind of my impression of how we would deal with the subjectable parts on it.
Okay, and then the last part of the sentence, um, of free expression, so that's, uh, as they're at the podium. I guess, how, how far does that go? Since it only applies to the public, it would have to be something that's stated inside the meeting itself. So just wondering how far that goes as far as free expression.
As far as making a free expression at the microphone is what I'm talking about during citizen comments.
Okay, so. All right, under general rules of decorum, um, again, it had to do, okay, so if, I probably, you probably already answered that question then. Okay, well, you, you answered that. That's all.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item 11-6, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the City of Mount Juliet, approximately 87.72 acres. Property known as the Curd Road subdivision property and being found at 2844 Curd Road, map 54 parcel 73, 81, 82, period 01, and being located within the city's urban growth boundary.
Motion.
A motion and second, it's on the floor. Do, okay, motion to defer, um, I will second that. So we have a motion for one meeting? The Plan of Services wouldn't be read into second reading anyway.
Plan of Services actually is going to be in form of a resolution, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
To run with second reading.
Correct, yeah. So we probably need to bring it back to the same time and second reading as. So, that's what I'm saying, but we don't need to annex this right now.
Yeah, we're gonna-
We'd have to make all the amendments.
To September 27th, for first reading, correct? To be coincide with the rezone.
I told you, you're getting me confused on the calendar, because I don't have it in front of me. If that's what we did, if we want to coincide, what we want.
That was the motion for one meeting. It's, it's still going to come back on first reading, referencing the same, the same stuff. It's what may make it tricky.
The Plan of Services has that stuff, this annexation on this does not.
Okay, and I think we're in good shape.
We're in good shape.
Okay.
Does the annexation, I'm looking for it now, does it not contain the zoning that it would be annexed in as? It doesn't reference that?
The, the Plan of Services captures the-
None, none talking about the, uh, actually annexation request, is what I'm asking about the.
We don't put those in the ordinance, the Plan of Services.
I think our default zoning is RS40, and we annex in under RS40, then the other ordinance takes care of the rezone.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was actually reading the memorandum here. That's what I was reading.
So, uh, well, we got a motion right now to defer one meeting. I assume the Pla, Plan of Services, um, will be addressed to the Planning Commission as the Planning Commission makes their changes to recommendations that will affect the Plan of Services, this will come back on second reading with the resolution, the Plan of Services as adjusted through the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And everybody just wish, that's watching, wished they had watched football at this point. All right, any other questions or comments?
Me too.
All right, uh, motion on the table to, uh, defer one meeting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is deferred one meeting, we will hear this annexation request at our next meeting. All right, uh, we completed our ordinances, and we now have six resolutions. Would there be any objection to me reading all six of these resolutions at once?
Be read.
All right. I, I will read them in the record, and then I will recognize you. A resolution 11-7, a resolution supporting a grant application for this, for the Mount Juliet Road ADA upgrade phase one project by the City of Mount Juliet for the Tennessee Department of Transportation, upcoming grant cycle. 11-8, a resolution approving the award of the construction contract for the Cedar Creek Greenway Phase One project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. 11-9, confirm Wilson Banking Trust as a depositary for City of Mount Juliet 2021 Federal American Recovery Plan Act, A, A R P A Coronavirus Relief Grant Fund. 11-10, a resolution approving the agreement between the City of, of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, and the C D M Smith for the implementation of a stormwater utility and a stormwater master plan, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. 11-11, a resolution approving a master agreement between the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, and Gresham Smith for services related to on-call structural engineering services, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. 11-12, a resolution approving task order number three for the previously approved master agreement between the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, and Barge Design Solutions Incorporated. for the previously approved master agreement between the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee and Barge Design Solutions Incorporated for services related to on-call traffic engineering services and authorizing the mayor, the mayor to sign the task order.
Motion.
Motion, and a second, thank you, I was, I was so afraid those wouldn't get on the table. Recognize the, the, uh, Public Works Director, you may have had a change for one of these.
Uh, just very minor on these, on 11-8, the Cedar Creek Greenway, I just want to ask that that be subject to TDOT's concurrence on the bid. And then items, uh, 11-10 and 11-11, we're working with, uh, hammering out some legal language on those, I want, would ask that both of those be subject to legal review and approval.
Okay.
Other than that, great.
I'll make the motion for those two items to be subject to the TDOT, TDOT's con, what was the right word?
Hmm, uh, 11-8 is TDOT's concurrence on the bid.
Concurrence on the bid, so motion to make those subject to TDOT's concurrence on the bid. Got a second, any discussion on that change? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes unanimously, 11, uh, 8 is amended one time, any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? All right, well, all, all in favor of the five items as read and 11-8 as amended one time, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. That concludes our agenda, if there's no objections, we will be adjourned.